I'd like to lead with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Leece, could you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Here.
Mr. Eyre.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the December 18th, 2018.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. That's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Eight to zero. Approval of minutes to the January 7th, 2019 organizational meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven with one abstention.
Abstention.
Approval of the agenda.
移到
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Eight to zero. Petition or comments by citizens are present. I have one, and it's on an item. Is that when you'd like to speak? Mayors report to council. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you. Been quite busy, actually cutting a few ribbons. Crew car wash at their place out at Town Center, went in and does interior as well, and some of the council people were there. It's a great concept. It's not new. Their method is new, but we're able to do that and celebrate them. They've been in Noblesville for quite a while. Also, we opened cutting pies and pints, and that is beer and pizza, not apple pie or pumpkin pie or any other type of pie. Celebrated with Judge Nation as his retirement open house, and I whispered in his ear, I told him I had a project after he left, after the first year, and he's also our Boy Scout breakfast chairman. So that is coming up February 12th, I believe, and Judge Nation is, or Steve Nation now, is the chairman of that event. Just today, it was announced that Mike Stephan was received the torment of the year award from the prosecutor, Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office. As you may know, Mike is the resource officer at Noblesville West. We're going to have a tour with the new president of Duke Energy coming up this week of SMC. We have a Justice is celebrating breaking ground at Setta Out Promenade, a project that has taken way too long, but again, the recession hurt the original owners, and we're happy to be working with Justice. We're swearing in firefighters this Friday evening. I think there's about 10 of them that are being sworn in. And also, we're celebrating on Saturday, celebration of life for retired firefighter John DeShiel. John DeShiel passed about 10 days ago. Rick, was he with us 30 years per, at least? Twenty-eight? Twenty-eight? Okay, I, thank you. I knew it was close, but John was a great person and a dedicated firefighter. We will be closed Monday for Martin Luther King Day, and that's all I have. Are there any questions of me? Thank you.
Council committee reports.
Mr. President, I am happy to share with you a brief Finance Committee report. The new Finance Committee for 2019 met last Thursday. Mr. Spalding gave us an update on a number of different items, including internal controls policy that's going to be put into place, or review and updating. The disposition of expired warrants is actually a subject that'll be on the agenda later tonight, but I would encourage all of you who are here in the audience, as well as anybody who may be watching on Facebook, look at that list. What that is, is that any checks that were issued by the city that are over two years old and haven't been cashed, they're going to be voided. And so this is the report to council. If you happen to be one of those people that are on the list, we encourage you to reach out to either City Controller Jeff Spalding or Heather Trexler, and they'll be happy to reissue the check to you if it's still due to you. But there's a number of checks that have not yet been cashed. We have a number of routine fiscal actions that are coming up. We're going to be continuing to work on our TIF funds reconciliation, listing, and another, a number of other matters that will be coming later on this year. Unfortunately, the claims come to you without a recommendation because at the time that we got to review those, we did not have a quorum. That is my brief report from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles. Any other committee reports? I have a couple of housekeeping items that I want to take care of. Mr. Jensen has served us very well last year as council president, and the council would like to present him with the 2018 President. And appreciate your service. Also, I think it's been 12 years since I missed an organizational meeting, and the last one I missed, I believe when I came back, I was elected council president. It took about 12 years to, that I forgot to, don't miss council organizational meetings in the end, so all you take heed in that. Also, I'd like to thank my dad, Mr. Eyre, for coming tonight to see me being sworn in, which isn't going to happen, but I may be sworn in because it has been 10 years, 12 years since I've been in. Just nudge me and correct me as we go along with this. Approval of claims.
Salute. Second.
We have an approval in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight to zero. Previously discussed ordinances, ordinance 4611-18, council consider ordinance 4611-18 an ordinance for a change of zoning from FH and R1 to R2 for property of 1102 East, 166 Street, Noblesville Township. I believe Mr. Ward's here, and you want to address both this one and the one after that?
Yes, please. Andy Ward, Churchill Children Antrim. I just wanted to thank the council for their time and feedback on these items and this project. We are withdrawing this. As it stands now, the project just isn't economically feasible. We hope to get our arms around these costs and come back in the near future with maybe a slightly different project, but again, thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. So 4611-18 and 4711-18 are hereby withdrawn. And I'm going to abstain from any discussion on this and turn the next two previously discussed ordinances over to Mr. Hampton to present and action on them.
All right, and you're going to stay right here.
I'm going to go down then for this one.
Are you going to go down? Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Next on the agenda is item 541218, the council to consider ordinance 54-12-18, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a lease among the Noblesville Community Development Corporation as lessor, and the City of Noblesville Redevelopment Commission and the Levinson Noblesville LLC as the lesses, and pledging local income tax revenues to the City of Noblesville Redevelopment Commission for the payment of lease rentals under such lease. Andrew Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President Hampton. Members of council, for the record, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Department. Before this evening for second reading and approval is an ordinance necessary to move forward with bond financing for the Levinson Project. Specifically, these bonds will provide proceeds to the developer, Mr. Shelby Bowen, who's with us tonight in the gallery. Those proceeds would cover the city's share of that project cost, which is primarily for the garage structure, and a portion of it will cover and go towards the mixed-use building, as well as certain site improvements. All of this is pursuant to a project agreement that this council approved, the form of back in September of 2018. As you'll recall from first reading, the proposed financing for the project is a lease financing, which, to which the debt service on those bonds will be paid from lease rental payments made under a lease agreement. As such, the first component of the ordinance before you this evening, that lease agreement is attached as Exhibit A, which you will note, the Noblesville Community Development Corporation as the lessor, and then the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission and the developer as the colesses. The developer is a lessie because they will improve the lease premise, and then the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission will make the lease rental payments contemplated under that arrangement. The second component of this ordinance, as you'll recall, is the approval of pledging local income tax revenue to the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission in order to make those lease rental payments. As proposed, those payments will be made first from the tax increment that will be generated from the project, and to the extent those revenues are not sufficient to cover the annual debt service payment, which we anticipate to be $1.3 million annually, then we will make up that difference with local income tax revenue. Procedurally speaking, again, this ordinance was before you for first reading at your December 18th meeting. This ordinance also comes to you with a favorable recommendation from this council's Finance Committee. With that, I will close my presentation. I want to acknowledge that we have Mr. Dennis Otten, a partner with Bose McKinnon Evans. He's also bond counsel on this transaction. If you have any questions, he and I, as well as Mr. Jeff Spalding, we can entertain them at this time, otherwise we would request approval of this ordinance before you this evening.
Mr. Murray, just a procedural question. Do, and Mr. Otten may have any answer, but I'm trying to determine, I'm reading the ordinance, is there a put provision in the bonds? It's five years. I see five years in here, but I don't know if there's been any conversation about five years, or 10 years, or if we've even gotten to that point yet. I'm trying to, I wasn't sure if the five years was accurate or not.
Mr. O'Connor, I want to make sure I heard the question right. Did you ask if there was a put feature in the bonds?
Of early redemption, like a 10-year?
Yes. You won't find it in this ordinance, but in the forms of financing documents, and actually, I think we have a packet of those that goes with the bond ordinance and the trust indenture, there is a section in there that talks about optional redemption, which I think gets to your point. We've not filled that in yet. That'll be determined with Mr. Spalding and the financial advisor as the bonds get closer to go to the rating agency. Traditionally, of a bond issue like that, like this, we would expect there to be, the bonds to be subject to redemption after a period of about eight years at the par value. That's kind of what the market is showing right now. On municipal bonds, you hardly ever see a put feature. We won't have a put feature on this one. We'll have a fixed interest rate, so the city knows exactly what it's getting for the term of the bonds.
Answer the question. Thanks.
One comment. Do you want to do this half of the ordinance or the other? There's a second part to it. Date your name, please, and address.
Good evening. Julia Church Kozicki, 925 Queensberry Drive, Noblesville. Thank you for continuing to consider commentary on this project. I shared a number of concerns in September, and I appreciate that many of them were addressed at that time, but I continue to worry about the size and cost of the project. I agree we need parking, and I appreciate the efforts to make a project match in appearance more carefully the surrounding area, but I do continue to think that, you know, if the administration council believed that this is the appropriate location, given the amount of money invested, both 2 million in cash and the value of the existing parking lots, I wonder if a more transparent method might have been considering a request for proposals rather than to look for the most economically efficient method for creating this project. I appreciate that we are moving along, and so I appreciate your opportunity, the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, I'll make a motion to approve 54-12-18 as submitted.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote, correct? Yes, so we have a motion, we have a second, and Ms. Leece.
Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
That is seven aye, and the ordinance is adopted.
Next is the second half of this, the council to consider ordinance 55-12-18, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2019, the Levinson Project, and the lending of the proceeds thereof to the Noblesville Community Development Corporation, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect there too. Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Members of council, again, Andrew Murray for the record. Before you this evening for second reading and approval, again, is an ordinance necessary to further bond financing of the Levinson Project. Specifically, this authorizes the issuance of taxable economic development revenue bonds that, again, will provide funds necessary for the city's share of the project costs. As you'll note, the maximum total principal amount for the issuance in the ordinance as written is not to exceed $19.1 million, which includes four components. Number one, that is the cost of the project. Number two, the cost of capitalized interest on the bonds. Number three, cost of issuance for the bonds. And number four, the cost for funding a reserve fund for the bonds. As you will also note in the ordinance, that principal amount could reduce to an amount not to exceed $17.8 million, and that reduction is in the event that we do not have to fund a reserve fund in order to sell the bonds on the open market to lenders and investors. I can tell you, after numerous discussions with Controller Jeff Spalding and our financial advisor, O.W. Cronin Associates, reality is looking like funding a reserve fund is unlikely in order to sell these bonds. However, I will note the contingency, the contingency of funding the reserves included in the ordinance to be consistent with prior legal advertisements, as well as a matter of responsible contingency planning. Procedurally speaking, again, this is, this was before you for first reading at your December 18th meeting, and comes before you with a favorable recommendation from this council's Finance Committee. With that, I will close my presentation. Mr. Spalding, Mr. Otten, and myself, we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Murray?
Questions or comments?
For a motion to approve.
Mr. Vice President, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 55-12-18.
A second. We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Leece.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Seven zero, the ordinance is approved.
All right, thank you. We welcome back President Eyre. Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Yep. Could you pass this down? All right, we're going to move on to new ordinances for discussion.
All right, we're going to move on to new ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance 0101-19, and ordinance amending ordinance 32-02-16 for the Embassy Suites Conference Center Plan Development regarding a text amendment for the creation of a parking lot on Lot 7 at 13765 Conference Center Drive South. Joyce Ann?
Motion to introduce?
Second.
Good evening. This item before you is basically an amendment to the original adopted plan development ordinance. It is specific to Lot 7, as indicated on the plans here. If you're not familiar with the location, it is south of Tegler Drive and west of Olia Road. The item before you, again, is an amendment to basically allow Lot 7, which was set aside to be a commercial lot to be used or created as a parking lot for the Embassy Suites and Conference Center. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on this item at their December meeting, and basically sent it with a favorable recommendation for adoption with a unanimous vote at the 10 members that were present. And with that, I will ask if you have any specific questions.
Questions from Mr. Taylor?
Did you say originally this was either an outlot, or it could be a parking lot in the original agreement?
No. In the original agreement, this was set aside to be basically three outlots here, to be used for, you know, commercial purposes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one comment, I think, out of, you know, to dovetail to Rick's point, when we approved the funding that goes with this, we had presumed that that outlot would be potentially, have something developed on it. The fact of the matter is, there's a parking necessity out there, as we've all been there, so it's more a function of, it doesn't really compromise our financial situation, but it's a piece of property that might, could have had some development on it, could, maybe in the future, too. I mean, he's going to put a parking lot on it, but doesn't mean that you can't tear the parking lot up and build a building on it either. So it's just, at this point, I just think transparency, ought to put it out there, make sure it's in the minutes, but it doesn't really have any impact on the transaction that's in place, so I just thought I would make that comment.
Yes, Mr. Hampton?
Just a, just a, is this, I was reading through and trying to find, is this is just purely a surface lot? There's not a plan to put a two-tier garage?
No. This is, well, I can show you the site plan here. It is truly just, you know, a surface lot. You know, the requirements are going to be met as far as landscaping, you know, and parking islands, you know, basically the bulk standards, they are going to meet all those standards, but it is just a surface parking lot.
You know, about how many spaces? Is it adding? Thank you.
Any other questions? From Ms. Yelton? This is a first reading, so we will see it again in two weeks.
Thank you.
I'm going to let Mr. Hampton go ahead and read the next project. I am going to abstain from this, although I felt that, and still feel that should have been a vacation 30 years ago, because it hasn't been used as an alley for over 30 years. Since it is part of the project, I'm abstaining from it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 020119, council to consider ordinance 020119, an ordinance concerning the vacation of alley right-of-way for the north-south alley between 8th Street and 9th Street, from the northern right-of-way line of Maple Avenue to the southern right-of-way line of the east-west alley between Maple Avenue and Connor Street, and establishing a public hearing. Mr. Hilton? Motion to introduce?
Second.
Good evening. Like I said, as Mr. stated before, this is, this is related to the Levinson Project. The alley has been closed for vehicular access for some time. As we're doing the title work for the transfer and the title work for the Levinson Project, this alley will need to be vacated. This is the ordinance for that. Also establishing a public hearing at the next common council meeting, and we will also be providing notice to the property owners in accordance with state statute. I request that the council set a date for the public hearing at the next meeting, and propose the approval of the vacation of the alley at the following council meeting. Any questions?
Any questions? I think it speaks for itself. Yeah. So this is the first reading, and we'll have the public hearing at the next. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Thank you, Mr. Holman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a new proposed development presentation. Council to consider introductory information for a proposed project text amendment to the Cumberland Point Plan Development. Ms. Yelton?
Good evening again. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the original PD, and then turn the presentation over to Mr. Swafford of Fagary Baker &amp; Daniels to give you the specifics of this project. The original PD for what is known as the Cumberland Point Plan Development, which is located south of Greenfield Avenue, east of Cumberland Point, east of Cumberland Road, and west of Howe Road, basically was the first mixed-use plan development that was adopted in the corporate campus. That was done back in 2002. The PD did include single-family, and included duplex units as well as apartment units, and then we had the office industrial-type component. This PD has been amended several times in the past, for one reason or another. Again, with that, I'm just going to, at this point, turn it over to Mr. Swafford. He can basically make the presentation on the specifics of their particular request.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Sam Swafford, 600 East 96th Street. I'm an associate at the law firm of Fagary Baker &amp; Daniels and proud graduate of Noblesville High School. Happy to be here tonight representing Bedrock Builders. Here with Bedrock Builders tonight is Steve Ball, and with my office is Steve Harden. Bedrock Builders, through their affiliate, Rockstone Investments, is the owner and developer of the property that's generally located along Endeavor Drive. I think the specific address is 15270 Endeavor Drive. General depiction of this real estate is within your presentation packets and also shown up on the screen. Bedrock is the developer, and what they're seeking to do is develop this integrated business campus within this property. The concept plan is also within your presentation materials, and as shown here on the screen. And the goal of this, the goal of this business campus is to attract businesses to relocate their corporate headquarters to within this development, so that those small businesses can relocate Noblesville, ultimately succeed in Noblesville, and ultimately stay in Noblesville. And Bedrock is doing the exact same thing, as they are relocating their corporate headquarters. They're currently leasing space in Noblesville, and will be relocating their headquarters to within this, to within this business campus. Now, the site layout and this general project is probably similar, or probably familiar with you, as the last city council meeting, Bedrock presented a preliminary resolution for a five-year real property tax abatement for this project. That item will actually be in front of you later on this evening for that final resolution and hearing. And so, in addition to the tax abatement, the next steps for this development is to seek some development standard, text amendments to within the underlying plan development ordinance. And as long as Bedrock is able to seek and amend these standards, they're able to develop the plan pursuant to these plans. It was brought to our attention that, as shown on the concept plan here and within the property tax abatement, it's showing two buildings at 6,800 square feet and two buildings at 8,700 square feet, whereas in the previous, in the PD ordinance text amendment that we submitted to you, we are reducing the minimum building size to 5,000 square feet. The current building size requirement for minimum building size is 15,000 square feet, and that 5,000 square feet was just a suggestion from the engineer. And as we work through this process, we'll update the ordinance so that it matches up with the tax abatement. We'll work closely with staff to fine-tune some of the language within the ordinance, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Mr. Swafford, I was looking at the elevations, which are attractive. I was just curious, is there going to be any warehouse space behind these, or is it just for corporate headquarters and office space? It would appear it's not office warehouse, for obviously, given the elevations, but they're attractive, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's correct. That's the plan right now. And then, as you recall, with the tax abatement, there's a warehouse aspect to it that's across the street, not necessarily associated with this parcel for purposes of the zoning amendment.
Thanks, that helps.
Any other questions? Mr. Swafford, I have one question. The drive going in, I assume is a private drive?
Yes.
And so these will be shared parking lots or individual parking lots?
Yes.
Will these meet the standards for fire truck ability to be able to get in and take care of any necessary?
You know, and that's something we'll have to check with our engineer, and something that will go through the process when detailed development plans are also filed and going through the tax process as well, so.
Especially with the two buildings sitting further back off the road, that we have the ability to get in there if any major emergency transpires. Other questions? Mr. Peterson?
They don't, they don't actually meet the requirements, but I'm sure there's an easy way to work that out. It seems like most of these are a result of dividing and subdividing, the text amendments are a result of dividing and subdividing the lot, again, so.
Yes.
It doesn't seem to adversely affect anybody that's already out there and been held to these development standards. This mostly seems to be a result of subdividing the lots.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? We'll see you in two weeks. Move on to miscellaneous. Number one, council to consider resolution RC-1-19, a confirmatory resolution designating an economic revitalization area for Rockstone Investment LLC. Ms. Johnson, also, we have a public hearing for resolution RC-1-19. Do we open the public hearing first? Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. Sam did such a good job, I didn't realize he was going to fill you in on a lot I was going to repeat tonight, so good job, Sam. Graduate with my kids from Noblesville High School, so great football player as well. Good to see him here. Yes, this agenda item request is for a confirmatory resolution approval to establish an economic revitalization area, as well as a request by Rockstone Investments LLC for approval of a five-year real property tax phase-in. The request for designation of an ERA is for the property at 15270 Endeavor Drive, Lot 7R, and also at 0 Endeavor Drive, Lot 20. Rockstone Investments, as he said, they're planning to build four buildings, as you see up here. Parent company, Rockstone is the parent company of Bedrock Builders, as Sam has mentioned, and the first building they will construct will be their corporate headquarters. Two of the buildings, as was stated, they're a minimum of 6,800 square feet, and the other two, a minimum of 8,700 square feet. And as mentioned, their goal is to attract small business and entrepreneurial businesses to this campus. Across the street, as was that information requested, they plan to build a 17,000-square-foot warehouse facility to actually supply warehouse space to these office buildings. Bedrock Builders is a premier custom home builder in Indianapolis, and they've built homes in Noblesville at Sagamore Park Place, at Sagamore, Lock Haven, and Stony Creek Estates. Their investment will be $4.3 million, and overall square footage for this project is approximately 48,000 square feet. As said, they've requested a five-year real property tax phase-in, and that's modeled in your packet. They currently employ 10 people, and they anticipate hiring two more within five years. There is a stipulation, this resolution as well, states that Rockstone Investments is required to pull building permits before June 30th of 2020. If a building permit has not been submitted for any of the five buildings for the project on or before that date, then such building or building shall only be eligible for the tax phase-in upon further approval from this body. So it comes with a favorable recommendation from both the EDCC Economic Development Council Committee, as well as the Council Finance Committee. In the chambers, I do have Steve Ball, owner of Bedrock Builders, as well as Mr. Harden and Mr. Swafford, for any questions that you might have.
Mr. President, and Ms. Johnson, and maybe the team can help answer this. On our previously discussed item, they're asking for waivers to reduce the building size, but yet here we are voting on something where we've, we're kind of stipulating, not kind of, we are stipulating, what the building size will be and what the abatement relates to.
Right.
So I'm having a hard time.
Yes.
Mashing those two together.
I'm going to have Sam come back up and reiterate his explanation for that. They will be held responsible to build the building size for the tax phase-in that is within this resolution. But he can explain further.
If they have smaller, they have to come back.
They, that was about pulling building permits, but I think Sam can explain.
I mean, the necessary reason that we're going to have to reduce the minimum building size is the current requirement is 15,000 square feet, because I think, in general, along this drive, the project, or the PD ordinance accounts for lots being three, four acres, you have one building on there, and it just kind of, that's the only development within that parcel. And so this project, since we have four separate buildings, we're going to have to reduce that minimum building size to meet what these plans are here in this concept plan.
What's in this abatement request?
Correct, so that they match up.
I thought the, I thought the tax abatement was for the square footage that is shown in the presentation.
No, in the, in the abatement presentation, not in the development presentation.
Hello, good evening. For the record, I'm Steve Harden, just to, Sam did a great job on the zoning. We've been working together on the tax abatement. The tax abatement before you is for this project, the four buildings here and the warehouse. The PD text amendment is to allow that project to actually be built, because right now, in the old standards, it would require you to have one 15,000-square-foot building on this property. The strategy is to do a business campus, to have business size, or sized buildings of 6,800 square feet, 8,700 square feet, to have individual business owners be able to buy and own their own building. So we have to modify the existing PD ordinance to lower the 15,000-square-foot building size minimum down to, what we'll do is we'll say 6,800 and 8,700, to allow those buildings to be built as we've shown it, and as you would be approving in the tax abatement. So the PD text amendment is just simply trying to allow the development to happen the way it's been presented to you.
Okay.
So it's not changing what you have been looking at and what you favorably considered previously on the tax abatement, simply allowing it to be implemented. Good question, so thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Johnson, do you have anything else to add?
I have nothing else to add.
Any other questions? Mr. Peterson?
I just, I was just curious if there was ever considered to do a condominium or an HPR or something within this, so it meets the intent of 15,000 square feet on this lot versus subdividing it like this? Yes. Pardon me? You could have said that for me. I could. We thought about it, and I think that the business strategy was that, thinking about who the local businesses are, that might have had a dream of owning their own property, and it might be easier for them to understand, to get financing, to be able to say, I own my own lot. I own my own parcel, my own piece of the dirt here in Noblesville, and I built my own building on it. But we did talk about it, actually a lot about how to do it, and it really came down to making it as easy as possible for the small business owners to understand what the opportunity was, and so that's. I just also wondered, too, if there was a consideration that perhaps none of the abatements are helped kick in until 15,000 square feet are built, to meet the, to meet the intent. In other words, until we get two buildings up. If you only build one building, it's going to look a little strange, that if perhaps we shouldn't kick any of this in until the second building is built, until we get to 15,000 feet under construction. That was just a question. Yeah, well, I think that the plan is, is there, Steve, correct me if I say this wrong, you planned to build first two buildings this year, correct? Yeah, so the, so the corporate head, so part of the two, though, Mr. Peterson, is that, one of the reasons for doing this is to help keep Bedrock here, they're building, that they're building the first one, is their corporate headquarters. And so that's, there's a that one of the reasons for doing this is to help keep Bedrock here. They're building, that they're building the first one is their corporate headquarters. And so that's, there's a need and reason for the abatement, just even for that, and as well as they're going to build the warehouse right off the bat, too. Thank you for the questions.
So they'll be building two buildings this year?
At a minimum.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we move forward, get through the PD process, plans that we'll ride into, building the first building, which is their corporate headquarters, the warehouse across the street, and then they're in discussions with other local businesses right now. They've been hoping this is going to work out, so they've been having discussions, and it's going, going well, so their hope would be break ground even more than that this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quickly, I'm sorry, Mr. President. So the total square footage will be somewhere around 25,000?
The total is about 46, is it 46,000 or 48,000? Because if you add the 17,000 square feet.
I mean, this, this first year.
Oh, this first year?
Because there'll be the 17,000 across the street, and then.
Yeah, so 17 plus the 68, so it's a 23-8 probably at a minimum. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Harden?
Yes, sir.
Your amended ordinance that you have in this booklet now that says minimum building size 5,000 square feet will be changed to match what the abatement?
Yes, sir. As it goes to, between now and plan, it will be updated. That's correct.
They can't build or do anything until it gets through.
That's correct. We couldn't go, yeah, it has to come back to you anyway for the PD amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the presenter? This is open for a public hearing, so I'm open, I'd like to open the public hearing for resolution RC-1-19.
Mr. President?
Mr. Taylor?
Seeing nobody come forward, I would recommend we close the hearing.
Second.
And moved in second to close the public hearing. This calls for a hand vote. All those in favor of resolution RC-1-19?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, we've got to have a motion to close the public. Okay.
You can vote.
I'm here.
Hand vote.
We need a hand vote to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. President? I would make a motion that we approve resolution RC-1-19.
Second.
Motion to approve RC-1-19. All those in favor, raise your hand. Approved date to zero. Miscellaneous number two, counsel to consider resolution RC-2-19, a confirmatory resolution designating an economic revitalization area for Gaylor Real Estate of Noblesville LLC. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you again, Mr. President and counsel. This agenda item is a request for a confirmatory resolution approval to establish an economic revitalization area as well as a request by Gaylor Real Estate of Noblesville for approval of a 10-year real property tax phase-in and a two-year personal property tax phase-in. This request is for ER designation for the four-acre property at 17230 Kraft Court in the Pleasant Street Commercial Park, Lot 12. Gaylor Electric is an electric design-build contractor offering high-quality electrical services. Gaylor's been in Noblesville for 10 years and is 34 years old corporately. They'd like to expand their Noblesville location by building a new 49,000-square-foot building that will create a business campus with two buildings whose combined square footage will be over 100,000 square feet. Gaylor will invest $4,232,000 on real property and $175,000 on new personal property. They've requested a 10-year real property tax phase-in and a two-year personal property tax phase-in, as stated, and that's modeled in your packet. Gaylor currently employs 93 people in Noblesville and anticipates hiring 20 new employees within five years. So Gaylor's making an additional large capital investment in Noblesville. Gaylor will employ approximately 113 people in Noblesville. Gaylor gives back to our community through its workforce and community development efforts and involvement. Gaylor has created a culture of good at their job and where, in their facility here in Noblesville. They mentor and employ Noblesville's at-risk youth, and they house at the Gaylor Electric, they house the Gaylor Electric Crossing School of Business and Entrepreneurship Satellite Campus. That is within Gaylor's current facility footprint. And staff at Gaylor are very involved in our community through events, sponsorships, and more. And in the chambers tonight is Mr. Jim Cruz. Jim's in back here, CFO of Gaylor Electric, and he and I are here and glad to answer any questions that you have about Gaylor's expansion.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I believe with my commercial banking relationship with Gaylor, I will recuse myself from any action on this.
O'Connor, any other questions or discussion for Ms. Johnson? Then this is open for a public hearing. So I'd like to open the public hearing for resolution RC-2-19.
President? Seeing no one come forward for the public hearing, I would make a motion that we close that for RC-2-19.
And moved in second to close the public hearing for RC-2-19. Requires a hand vote. All those in favor closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Eight to zero.
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero, I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would make a motion that we approve resolution number RC-2-19.
Second.
Motion in second to approve resolution RC-2-19. Requires a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero. Thank you. I hate, do you have anything you'd like to add? I hate to have.
I want to thank the council and for their support for Gaylor Electric and continued support.
Thank you. On to miscellaneous, miscellaneous item number three. Counsel to consider receipt of expired warrants and checks pursuant to IC 5-11-10.5 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018. Mr. Spalding, and I believe this is the thing that Ms. Wiles alluded to regarding people that might have checks they never cared.
Unclaimed money. Obviously, I'm not.
You're standing.
Good evening. Heather Trexler, Office of Finance and Accounting. This is really just a cleanup, year-end housekeeping. We want to stay so that we're following Indiana Code, and we are proposing these to the council. No action is needed. We just needed to be able to show these in an open meeting. Any questions?
Could you raise that? And I believe the total down below is a little over $3,000, is that correct for that?
Yes. $4,408,880.
I don't know if this goes out to the public internet broadcast or not. If you see your name on there, as was stated, you might want to contact the controller's office and see if there's something they can do to help reissue the check or if, or if it's. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Trexler.
Thank you.
President, I do have a question. I didn't ask this in the finance committee. Is there a timeframe that the potential payees here have to respond?
No. We've actually recently had a check found by a citizen that was three years old, and we had already still dated it, but we, obviously, we owed them the funds, so we, we will reissue the checks. We keep our records back seven to 10 years, so we, we have the documentation to prove that there, the check is legitimate.
I didn't know if there was a drop-dead date or not, but.
No.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
You're welcome.
Real quick, Heather, Mr. President. Due to curiosity, unclaimed money, where does it go?
It will go back into the fund that it was originally issued from.
Okay. Tony?
Thank you.
All right, counsel comments. I think we're done with all the other stuff that's out there. Any comments from anybody on the council? Mr. Taylor?
I'd just like to put a thank you out to the street department for their excellent job this weekend with our snowstorm, and it looks like they may get to do it again this weekend, but as always, they do a fantastic job, and I appreciate it.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good job.
Good job, Mr. President.